Monday, September 10th at 5:00 PM, Multi-Purpose Room. This is the Wilmer City Council Work Session Roll Call. I guess we don't know who will call this, I'm sorry. First item on the agenda is the EDC Budget Presentation. Mr. Backman, the Executive Director for the EDC.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Aaron Backman, EDC Executive Director, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the EDC's proposed 2019 budget. And you should have copies in your packets or online in terms of both the 2019 budget as well as the fiscal year comparison. The proposed budget does accomplish several things. Like the last two years, it's a balanced budget. Revenue is $587,613, expenses are $587,600. The county levy goes up 2.7%, which is less than last year's 3.2% or less than two years ago when it was 4.4%. And hopefully, next year it can be under 2%. Each year, I evaluate all the line items in the EDC's budget. Out of 127 line items for FY 2019, 46 line items went up, 25 went down, and 56 remained the same. Terms of notable items in the budget. If you look at the first page of the budget, under expenses, bottom of the first page, the Tiger Two Grant is in the budget pertaining to the Wilmer Wide Project, so it continues in there. If you turn the page to the second page, you'll see the various committee budgets. We have five standing committees that we work with, and I'm blessed, I feel, to have a lot of volunteers with those different committees. And those committees include the Ag and Renewable Energy Development Committee, Broadband and Advanced Technology, Business Retention, Expansion, Recruitment, Finance, Marketing, and Public Relations. We also provide support for the tourism activities. What was notable in the committee budgets? Well, the Ag Committee's budget went up by $9,500 to enable additional events and training for our ag producers. It should be noted that a significant portion of that increase is covered by corporate sponsorships for those events. In addition, the BRE Committee budget went up by a little over $2,500, and that is to move ahead with our four strategic goals related to workforce development, childcare initiative, transportation including Highway 23, et cetera. Marketing, which is on the next page. We reorganized the line items so that the social media and e-newsletter expenses can be more easily tracked. It accommodates salary increases for staff and caps employer contribution increases for health insurance at 8.3%. Employees are responsible for increases above that percentage. It reduces office expenses by about $2,000 or 1.7%. The 2019 budget continues to enable the EDC to be a member of WARCUP as well as a member of the Community Venture Network, or CDM. And I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have of me in terms of the EDC's budget.
Also, any questions specific to the budget for Mr. Backman? Any comments in general from Mr. Backman? Councilmember to respond to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would note that this has been viewed by the Joint Operations Board along with the...
Joint Powers?
Joint Powers Board, thank you. And quite thoroughly scriptguised, I might add, and I feel very comfortable with this budget. And I think that the work that we're seeing done through the Economic Development Commission is truly outstanding work, and it's very much appreciated. So, thank you, Aaron, for you and Connie and the LIAA folks and everyone associated with your office. I think it's stellar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson? Aaron, I too want to compliment you and your staff. Want to take a look at a little fishing trip that happened that brought $1.5 million to our community. It was worth the price of bait and admission. So, thank you for the work that you do. Also, you know, you've been working a lot of different projects. You keep me very updated on a very regular basis, and I appreciate those phone calls and keep them coming nonstop. And it's appreciative to know what's happening in our community, and just those updates really do help. Doesn't appear that they have any questions for you. Have a beautiful evening, and get outside and enjoy it before the rain comes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to have formal action on it.
And so, it'll be on our... I've seen the limited discussion. Are we just going to put it on consent? Oh, we can't put it on consent. Yeah. Put it on the regular agenda. So, it'll be on the regular agenda for the next meeting, and then we... I would anticipate approval on that one.
Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any members of the public that wish to speak? Speaking and hearing done, we'll bring the next item on the agenda, which is the food truck discussion. Ms. Thompson?
Earlier this year, we received a request to operate a food truck in the city. Currently, the city does not have a policy in place, and this was a topic of discussion at the Clerk's Institute I attended this spring, as food trucks are becoming very popular and communities are being proactive in adopting ordinances with regard to food trucks in their communities. I reached out to obtain copies of ordinances that cities have adopted and received, ordinances from several cities. I formed a committee of the city administrator, public works director, planning and services director, city planner, and myself to review the ordinances and draft an ordinance to address issues of concern for the city of Wilmer. City Attorney Robert Scott has reviewed the draft ordinance, and his suggestions are included in the draft ordinance presented to you. Earlier today, it was brought to my attention that additional commercial industrial areas were not highlighted on the map included in the packet. Therefore, I provided each of you with an updated map to reflect the needed changes in their capture stations this evening. We're recommending two types of permits. A limited permit for operations in the city up to seven consecutive days, and an unlimited annual permit which allows for operations in the city for any number of days during the calendar year. And all unlimited permits will expire on December 31st following the date of issue. The application will be received from the city clerk's office and require approval by the public works director, police chief, and city clerk prior to issuance. Insurance requirements are for the standard amounts required by the city and also the same as other communities. There are certain locations food trucks will be allowed to operate and also standards which must be met. Permit will be non-transferable. Prohibited practices must be followed. Suspension or revocation of a permit is addressed in the ordinance provided. The appeal process is not included in this ordinance, but per city attorney's recommendation, the city should adopt a uniform appeal procedure applicable to any business license or permit required in City Code, Chapter 8, as denial or revocation of such licenses and permits requires the applicant be given due process, typically including right to notice of the adverse decision and opportunity to be heard by the governing body. The council decides to move forward with the draft food ordinance. Mr. Scott will reformat the ordinance for introduction on September 17th as a new Division 3 in Chapter 8, Article 3 of the City Code, and include the recommended appeal procedure as a new Article 10 in Chapter 8.
I have a couple of questions. The council has some questions. Councilmember Meskey?
Well, just curious if you can explain, we have these map, the food truck locations, are they in... They could be in either the Parks End or the indicated commercial industrial area? Or where are they to be?
Here, the map in front of you has been revised.
My question will still be the same. Can they be in both 1 and 2? The Parks End Commercial? Or is it simply the...
Yes. The only difference is the hours of operation. And that is spelled out in the ordinance?
Councilmember Nelson?
I just was seeking clarification on what a food truck is versus a food vendor in the context?
And that is under the definitions?
Yep.
On the first page?
More than that. So, if somebody sets up a tent and brings in... Caterer brings in food to a specific location, what kind of license do they need? Or is every food vendor considered a food truck?
Typically, you know, under the definition, it says that it's a self-contained food service operation located in motorized wheeled or towed vehicle that's readily movable. I would have to see if it further defined it. I don't recall, you know, as under number 2, it says it's as defined in Minnesota statute, Section 157.15 subdivision 9. I would have to look that up and see if that included, but our intent is not for someone to set up a tent on the sidewalk.
I'm not opposed to it, because that happened a few times already. And it's a caterer that does it, so I'm just curious. I don't want to constrain people from doing it, so that's... I'm just curious what the guidelines are for that.
That is something, you know, we could add. That's why we have it up for discussion this evening.
I don't want to add, if you want.
Just a clarification.
Okay. First licensing.
Sure. I can check on that.
Ms. Thompson, could you give us the names of the cities that you referenced?
Yes. I received eight of them. Baxter, Garden Hills, Elk River, Raynard, Ridgefield, Delano, Roxy, and St. Louis Park.
Okay. And then, when looking at this, it doesn't include our schools, and our schools frequently have these types of services provided. It doesn't include Ridgewater College, which I would think would probably be something that happens there on a regular basis as well. Mr. Councilmember Meskey may be able to speak to that better than I could. I'm concerned about this ordinance. I spoke with the city administrator about this last week, and, you know, we're a retail center. Tourism is a big part of what we do. And, you know, I brought this request to you back when it came, because I had an individual ask me about it. And what I'm seeing on this is that the fee would be $50 for up to seven consecutive days. Well, the person that talked with me, they would have to go under the $150 one, because they, you know, they do the midtown market, plus then they do Rockin' Robins, and they do other events throughout the community. I did make a phone call, asked the city administrator. He didn't know the answer, so I called the insurance agent after I left a meeting with Mr. Holland in comparison. Just the added insurance just for the liability is an additional minimum of $200. So, there we have $150. Now, we've got another $200. I was down at the event last Wednesday night in downtown, and when I left, I wasn't there for the entire event, but when I left, I think they'd sold 25 orders from pizza. And at $10 apiece, they'd just eaten up the whole $250 just for application process. That doesn't include the other four insurances that are required under this ordinance. And so, to me, it seems very cumbersome. It seems that we're basically saying we don't want food trucks. City Administrator Holland assured me that's not correct. And, you know, I'm just concerned about it, because when I hear the fact of self-power, or I hear the fact of it's towed by a trailer, that's pretty much everybody that's on it, Rockin' Robins. And they can't do it seven consecutive days, because the thing runs for a month. And so, they're going to have to do the $150. And so, if it's underneath a different permit, I do understand that. But then, we as the council, I'm assuming, will they will come back and say, well, so those people get a special treatment? And we don't? Just simply because we're setting up on a street? And I'd ask the administrator in regards to... I've got one more thing, and then we'll be done. You know, what happens with Zimmer up in London, up at Games Lake, when he pulls in his trailer to sell it in auction? So, those are my questions. I think, you know, I'm all for regulating things, but this just seems to me to be a little bit, you know...
And if I may clarify, the Rockin' Robins, or Wilmer Fats, or the Block Party, or all those, they do not count as events for the food trucks under this ordinance, because those are special events, and the permit is taken out by that activity? So, or they are covered under that organization's insurance?
And so, would the other four insurance requirements be included for those events? Because there's a total of five different insurance requirements here.
And they supply me with a copy of their insurance policy that meets all of those requirements. Rockin' Robins, you know, any of the groups, the Block Party. So, everything is covered under them. This is just for separately. If a food truck comes in, and, you know, we want to set up at a park for like a tennis tournament, or we want to set up downtown, you know, this is just for their own specific, not a special event. If it's an event hosted by a business, you know, and using our public street, it falls under that event permit.
Councilmember Nelson?
So, Rockin' Robins is assuming there's the liability for all of their vendors that are there?
Yes.
So, what is their requirements for?
They have the same requirements. It's a standard insurance requirement, you know, and that all falls under them. They have an umbrella policy covered.
Councilmember Meskey?
I share a lot of the same concerns the mayor expressed. I think having... And again, is the public need an ordinance like this? I think this needs to be worked on a bit. That's a good start. Maybe a third zone. That's one you have to ask for a special commission that would include the schools would be a fairly good idea. I think the college would be one of those. That would be very well served by such a thing. I'm curious, how do we handle the current vendors that we have in the city? For instance, the ice cream trucks and things like that? How do they currently operate?
That's a mobile unit. They don't park and set up on a certain spot. They just drive down the street, as far as I know. We don't have any permits issued for an ice cream truck. You know, they're just traveling down the street, stop people by, and they move on. They're not blocking any parking spaces. They're not setting up anything in a permanent manner.
Could they?
If they wanted to set up somewhere, then they would fall under the food truck ordinance.
And so, currently, they have no requirements from the city? And the vendors at events not described earlier, for instance, Foxhole Event or a thing like that, where there's a trailer parked downtown, and it's not, you know, a specific event that you outlined? Foxhole's insurance covers them, I assume? And then, they have no... Currently, there's nothing with the city on those?
Correct. Like Foxhole is having their anniversary event?
Right.
It's covered under them. They apply for...
So, there's no agreement with the city for that item?
No, the city's not liable.
Councilmember Nelson?
This isn't about food safety, because they still have to deal with the county, correct?
They either have to get a permit from the county or from the state of Minnesota, and whichever permit they have, they have to provide with us when they... That time of application.
So, when we're looking at insurance coverage and explaining some of our reasons for needing that coverage versus just food safety?
Well, for liability, you know, any accident that would happen right on their place, you know, or if they had grease, you know, anything...
Was there pollution?
On their property, you know, anything. Other than food safety. Because food safety, they are inspected by either the state or the county. You know, they could have things that you could... Yeah, you could get run over, like you said. Or they could trip on their cords, their, you know, it's all kinds of things. We're just trying to cover the city's liability. And like I said, we just... We used things from all the other communities and put together. And Robert did review it, and we're up to adding, like, you mentioned the school. We could add that in with the commercial industrial, and then put the schools, just color it pink. So, yeah, that's not a problem. We wouldn't have to add an extra section for that, just to revise the map.
Councilmember Elrod?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think sometimes, each policy has its purpose. Commercial general liability, property damage, personal liability, advertising liability, and different things like that. So, they each have their purpose. So, I don't think we're in a position to... Thank you. I don't think we're in a position to alter what's required. And I think it's the businesses, not opportunities, but responsibility to go out shopping to find the best price that they can obtain for those requirements. And I don't think that by having those requirements, we're hindering the business. I think we have to have those to protect the community. Each policy has its purpose, and to try to limit policy doesn't seem to be consistent with what the rest of the state is doing. So, and I don't think we can get caught up in the amount of coverages. Coverages and premiums are two different things. And again, that's what the owner of the truck will have to do, is he'll have to go out there and shop for the best price of his policy. And I... If this is standard operating procedure for other communities around the state of Minnesota, I don't think it's prudent to break with that or encourage to break with that. That's my feeling. I think there's a purpose there, and I think we should abide by it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
So, the insurance, you said, is a standard?
Yes, it's a standard.
Standard, the standard? I mean, when you looked at the other cities, would you say that this represents high or low or medium?
We're kind of in between on the fee schedule. Somewhere a little less, somewhere a little more. And it was the committee's consensus of the committee to come with those fees.
Councilmember Fagerlin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just an example, what happens when there's a baseball booster tournament, and they put on concessions, and that's an important part for them, because it's a moneymaker? They have this... They're at the school, and they're at parks. What if a food truck would come to a park? They can stay there then, even though the baseball boosters have it for the weekend?
I would say if there's an event happening, and, you know, if the other committee members have any input, please speak up. But if there is an event already happening at the park that we're aware of when they come in with their application for the permit, we would deny it probably, because there is already something.
A year permit? They're not going to come in and tell you, we're going to this and we're going to this. They're going to assume they can go wherever they want.
They still would have to indicate dates, because we'd have the street, you know, certain areas are going to have to be blocked off, and public works would need to know about that. And also, the police department, we need to know when they're operating.
Yeah, but for baseball tournament, they'd be at a park. It wouldn't be on a street.
It's still a city park if they're parked on the street outside of the actual park itself.
It'd be at Swanson Field. It'd be at Sunrise Park. It'd be at the school.
In the grass.
Wherever convenient, just like they do in mail auctions. Down the yard sometimes, sometimes in the streets. But I want to have a showy match between the boosters and owner of the food truck.
I think I understand what you're asking. You know, there's a drive, and then there's a parking lot, and a lot of times, a food truck would set up in a parking lot or a drive. My question is, I don't know the answer to this, but I'm hoping that maybe Rob, or you might even know this, but currently, if our park system, do we have restrictions as far as outside vendors operating? So, we currently do not. So, his hypothetical situation could occur. So, the, you know, the boosters have a concession set up. I decide I'm going to come out and sell snow cones and baseball caps. There's no restriction against me doing that in the park. Right? So, that is one of the things that I conveyed, that, you know, I'm not a big regulation guy, but when a regulation will stop, you know, competition from unfairly happening, such as the example you're giving, or, you know, reduce arguments among people in restaurants, "Why are you set up in my restaurant?" You can't do that. This ordinance covers those type of issues. And so, this was our first draft attempt at that. But I think you've also brought out a good point, that in our park system, in fact, I had a conversation with Rob this afternoon about procedures and policies within our parks and our facilities, and that we need to update those. This is one of the things that we need to address, so that if there's, you know, Little League Baseball going on, only certain people are authorized, you know, per the contract and agreement with the city to operate. Thank you.
Because we could have it at the swimming pool, too. We've got concessions there, and they could park on the street or on the school yard. People could lock it. Could do it at the civic center. They have concessions there. Has to be in writing, so everyone knows.
Right. This summer, I came out on a Sunday afternoon. I was out by the aquatic center. There was a soccer game going on, an adult league, and there was a trailer parked up on the sidewalk by the soccer field. So, it kind of disturbed me that they were so close to the soccer field and maybe damaging the grass. But then, the other thing occurred to me was, who gave them permission to go out there and sell their concessions? Now, there wasn't any other concessions around, so they weren't competing against anyone else. But I don't know if that was the soccer club itself, or maybe a friend of those. But that's something that, you know, we need to address, so that we don't have conflicts. We don't want to, you know, discontinue the service. Obviously, they're providing a good service for the activity.
Councilmember Christensen?
Good, Chris, Mayor. Presently, have no ordinance, just sort of being... Correct? And have we had any problems? What about the Block Party downtown? How's that going to affect them? I mean, is it... They're going to be all the food vendors there, or Bev Doherty's Thursday's Market? Are those going to be affected by this? I guess I don't see the need for a fee, as long as they can prove that they got insurance and the license to sell food, and they have to take safe certain classes, too. As long as they can do that, why try to limit them by charging a fee? Like, I said earlier, they sold pizzas and pudding and coffee. We don't want to be a pain to these people, but because they do provide a high service. But if they know that they got insurance, that they prove all that, why would we have to be? It sounds like a lot of paperwork somebody's getting to do now to save it all.
They wouldn't be charged a fee for the example that you just gave. So, those special events out of Robbins Island and other hosted events, the event promoter or organizer is the one that provides the coverage for that. So, they wouldn't be charged.
So, we're addressing guys just driving around, the food truck that's out there where he wants to...
I guess the example I can give is, in Chillicothe, we had a caterer who decided to expand his business, so he bought a food truck, and then he would go down and he would park in the city park. He would go out to the industrial park on certain Tuesdays and Thursdays, park on the street. And so, that was one of the first times that I saw a food truck during, you know, Monday through Friday kind of business. And that's what he was strictly doing. He wasn't doing it for charity. He was doing it to make money. And so, I think that in a lot of communities, you will see these food trucks are now becoming a profitable business. It's kind of chic, you know, to get your taco or your hamburger. It's kind of chic, you know, to get your taco or your hamburger or whatever, coffee from these. And so again, this does not apply to all these different kinds of special events. It's not going to add additional cost to the vendor.
Strictly for the individual that's not doing one of these events, basically. Do we have a lot of them? I mean, they've shown up. Is that why we're concerned with this?
I think we're just getting the first indications of them now. But I don't know, Judy, do you know of any right now?
The only one that we would have had was last week at Foxhole that I'm aware of is the event happening. This Wednesday is covered under their, their, their application for their special anniversary event. And this is something, you know, it's something new. So, you know, the vendor that was here last week, you know, it's new, maybe it wasn't advertised, you know, it's, many things can happen. I think as, as it gets more familiar in the community, we're going to have more and more people come in with their food trucks. Hey, we'd like to set up here, we'd like to set up for that. And that was a part of our discussion at the Clerks Institute, that cities are getting more and more, you know, there's more volume of people interested in doing this. And you need to be proactive and have something in place so, you know, you can regulate things and manage it.
The key word is regulate, which every moment of our lives is regulated. If you step out of your front door, you're regulated. We want to be as easy as we can. These people are on the payers, first of all. They make money, they pay taxes, they maybe have an employee and they pay him. So again, I don't think we want to put any more pressure on them other than they need to prove that they've got these licenses and then they have to abide by the map, you know, here's the map, here's where you can go and you can't go on the white, white part. I can see what this would be happening more and more down the road. It's not punish them for trying to be an entrepreneur, just make sure they're licensed, not licensed, but they have, well, food license and they have the proper insurance. I think that would be fine. Just a lot of neighborhoods.
Yeah, more of a monitoring, you know, and so that we're available, that we know they're out there, you know, so the police department is aware of this thing happening and also public work staff needs to probably set up, you know, they have to block off certain areas of the street. So, you know, the fee does cover some of those expenses, hopefully.
Councilmember Mersky.
Well, I think that we also have a taco truck that goes out to like Dewey's every Thursday. Is that going to be regulated or anything? There's a lot of, it's a lot of gray and I know we're trying to paint some boundaries here, but we have to be very careful when we're painting those boundaries. I mean, we've had some established companies that are doing these types of things already and we don't want to regulate them out of business. But I do, I think it's a place to start and I think the map is probably of some extreme importance there. And I think on here it says like food truck location subject to city approval. That almost feels like when I read that, that it was, this is the map and that we're approving the map. But in hearing that made me want to actually approve where they are parking on this map at any given time. That's different than what I'm reading here. So I'm thinking, I can understand the map and I can understand wanting to know where people are. That can alleviate some of the concerns that you're hearing here at the table. But I caution, I mean, we need to reexamine some of these pay structures and things like that because I don't want to force over our established businesses to have some undue burdens that we make quite often.
And also to mention when you talked about Deweys, when they're on the private business property, they don't need to match this. We can't regulate on private property. This is only when they are operating on city or public property. So Deweys, that is, you know, it's on their parking lot, it's their property.
Are you going to have every private property on this map marked off here?
No, we'll just say.
Exactly, so that's what I'm saying.
If there's any public property in these designated areas, you know, they're allowed to operate a food truck in those areas upon public streets or public property. Private property is, you know, they can do what they want on that. There's no fee and that's not included as an event. Okay.
So does Wilmer's has a cover all the people pulling wagons and selling them out? Parade? They didn't know that they're there?
Yes. Some of the parade permit.
It is, even though they don't, they don't register it?
They register.
They all do?
They register with Wilmer's, yes.
People pull the wagon, sell them off, they all get marked by the cops? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would imagine they register. Some of them see random. I'm just seeing if you get some of them.
Councilmember O'Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think that the vendors should have some skin in the game. It's going to cost somebody something. If we have to police an area as far as trash removal, if they go and don't pick up after themselves and we have to send a team of guys in, that's an expense, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to burden the community on that. So I believe that, and I think the fee can be negotiated. I don't want it to be exorbitant. I want business as much as the next guy. But I think, I think there should be some, like I said, and I think Rod's probably heard this term, some skin in the game and to put some responsibility on the parties involved and allow some people more conscientious, I believe. So I would say that we should look at something reasonable, not prohibitive, but something that's also looking up for the community's best interest also. Thank you.
And if I might add, you know, you guys can adjust the fee. This is just a recommended fee that we as the committee came up with. The lowest fee of the communities, I believe, was a $30 fee for the seventies.
So what I heard is we want to include the schools as another zone and I heard that there was concern about the fee. So we request that staff would come up with an adjusted fee and that we include, would then be number three, which would include educational areas. Am I missing anything that council said?
And the map. Specify the map a little more in that language.
Councilmember Mersky.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm wondering if it would be wise to include it under the exemptions, the commercial property so that someone reading this would realize that they can't go to Deweys or wherever. So it doesn't, it excludes private property.
Correct.
Okay.
I think I would say commercial, oh, yeah. Councilmember Nelson.
I just was seeking clarification on that. So I understand currently a business could say, I'm going to have, allow a food truck to be on my property every Tuesday. And there wouldn't be any fees. It would be the business's responsibility to make sure the insurance was there, they wouldn't have to collect anything. So it could be over downtown business, the market itself, just simply saying, I'm allowed this truck on my property at this time.
Most downtown businesses, their building is their property. The sidewalk is private, is city and the street. You know, most downtowns don't have, you know, much open space to put a truck on.
So in other communities, I mean, you'll see on Facebook, the truck is on this street at this time. So just other cities designate like a certain spot that food truck could be on? Or how does that work in other communities where food trucks just decide where they want to go?
Well, in, in the proposed ordinance, we do say, you know, they have to include a site plan. And that's on the top. I can see under permit applications, the site plan that includes number of off-street parking spaces, description of food truck and location on the site where the food truck trailer will set up. So we know where, where they're going to be setting up. And that, you know, is pretty much included in the other ordinances as well.
If I could add something, I think I understand your question. So I'm a car dealer, we have several car dealers here. They like to host events and parties and they have food trucks set up out there. Come on out Friday and join our hot dogs and such, right? They don't require that, just to answer your question. They would not require this food truck ordinance. They're not parked on the street, they're parked on the car dealership. They're parked in the Walmart parking lot, they're, they're in the Target parking lot. That's not all we're talking about. So I think there was a little bit of confusion on that, but it's not covered there.
So the site, but you just cited a site plan. Where would the site plan be?
Okay, the site plan, let's say they're going to park on Wilmer Avenue. Well, we probably wouldn't like that, that we wouldn't want to park a food truck on Wilmer Avenue. But if they're going to be over by Rice Park and we'd like to know where, which street adjacent to Rice Park and we would get, and they would mark that out, they would put where their trash can would be and where customers would go and order and then exit. So that's what we're kind of talking about.
Councilmember Ossis.
My understanding of how some of the food trucks that I've seen in other cities is it isn't an event that they're, that they're having a specific date and a certain place that they're going to be. This is their business and it's mobile. And so sometimes they might park outside of a brew pub. You see them a lot outside of different brew pubs. I, I don't see them in the licensing process being able to tell you, on this day I'm going to be here, this day I'm going to be at the park. If it's raining, they're probably not going to be at the park on that day. They're maybe going to be outside of, let's say, the Foxhole on Friday and Saturday. If something else came up and maybe they were doing a wedding someplace or they had another private event, they're not going to have a calendar, I think, to give to the city that I'm going to be this, this, this place, this place, this place on all these separate days. I mean, they're, they're a mobile food. They might be going some places at lunch and they find out, okay, we've decided we're going to go to Dewey's on Mondays. That doesn't pan out, so they're going to a different business at another time. I mean.
Actually, they do. They generally do have a plan. And part of that business is the customers have to know that you can be. So they advertise that and they'll say, I'm going to be at Sixth and Vine every Tuesday this month. And so they put that out. Now, of course, if it's rained out or there's a hurricane, they don't go. But generally, yeah, they do it, advertise in advance. That's been the practice that I've seen. And, you know, this Gornway caterer that I was talking about earlier, they had a specific plan and then after a month, if they didn't draw customers at that business, then they would say, next month we're going to be in the industrial park and we're going to be at this certain location. So they do plan in advance and because that's part of their, customers have to know where they're at because I knew a lot of people in my office and they would say, where's that truck at this week? And someone would look it up, oh, they're on their Facebook page, this week it's going to be at such and such. And a lot of them use social media to, you know, to send menus. I used to have one business that would send me their daily special every morning in a text message. You know, so that's the trend now.
Councilmember O'Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think, why don't you go ahead and ask that, council, please?
I think what we're going to find is that these trucks are going to park where there's the lunch crowd, where there's a large number of people coming out all at once. You look at the Portland's and Oregon, Portland, Oregon, and some of their businesses, their food trucks, they know where, where people are. They're going to park in that vicinity and they're going to try to get that business. So I think that's where we're grooming this. We're kind of grooming towards that kind of business, as I understand it. And right now, we're just beginning to see some interest. That's, to me, a sign that Wilmer's being a little progressive and I'm excited to hear about that. It's going to bring some new interest to the community, so that's very exciting. So I think we're going to see them. We're, we might see them at a park on a weekend, but once they figure out where the people are coming out of their businesses, that's where we're going to see them and that's where we got to be prepared for them. Thank you.
Councilmember Mersky.
As I'm thinking here, I think that this idea of them being able to tell us where they are every day is probably not going to work very effectively as I'm trying to ponder. So I think it would be more effective to clearly define the areas at which they go and if you have the other rules in place about, you know, private places and so on and competition, that you just let the map serve as the place where they can be. I mean, I think that that's going to be really tough to regulate. I know they may say, I'll be here this week, but you know what, maybe they have to move. I've watched plenty of the great food truck rates that does not make me qualified by the shape of corn. But I've watched them relocate multiple times as they park in the wrong place. And so if they're saying, you know what, today there's just nothing happened in this area, we need to move, I don't think we should hinder company by saying, now you got to call down to the city to let them know where you're relocating to. If you're within the map, I say, let it go, but just food for thought. Sorry.
No pun intended, right?
I'm going to pick up the stick on the other end on this one. I don't think it's bad to provide some, some guidelines or have a general idea. I don't believe that they're, that this is a in the cement kind of thing, that you can't move your truck. But I think it's, for informational purposes, it's probably advantageous to know, okay, we're going to have a dozen trucks in this, in this area on this day. It's, there's, there's people that need to know that information. And I'm not saying that it's, if there's one truck that's not doing any business and he sees another, knows of another opportunity, gets a phone call from a buddy and says, hey, there's no food truck over here, why don't you get over here because people are hungry? There's nothing to say they can't move. But I think for planning purposes and to allow the law enforcement and special services, even the fire department to know that, hey, you know, we're going to have a large number of people at Sixth and Vine or wherever, I don't think it's a bad thing, but I, I think it's just a guide at this point and it's not meant to be restrictive. Would that be fair to say?
Thank you. Councilmember Ossie.
Then why would they have to give their, their locations? And again, who's going to, who's going to monitor it? If they, if they've said that they're going to be, go Fifth and Vine, let's say somebody did give that location, now there's three trucks there and they're upset because this person didn't say they were going to be there, you know who's going to get called? Law enforcement?
And us.
Yeah. But how, how is law enforcement going to address, you know, it's Friday night. How are they going to address who, who said they could be there and who has the right to be there and who doesn't? I, I just think it has to be, like what I said before, they have the areas, they can be in any of those designated areas. I'm just not seeing the logic of having to say where they're going to be.
One of the things that come to my mind is, let's just say they leave a mess. Their customers, they don't have a proper receptacle or it's overflowing and then it goes down into our, you know, wastewater, our stormwater runoff. Or it flows into the yard or it blows into the park. That's one of the things, you know, that occurs to me. Or have some kind of substance or something that goes all over the street and people drive through it in their cars later. You know, I just, just general cleanliness so that if we knew that was Bob's Burgers, then we know who to follow up with. If we don't know who that was, then we're going to have to rely and try to find out if anybody knew who that food vendor was. We'll have to do a little bit of investigative work to do that. But if we knew that Bob's Burger had three locations he was authorized to use, then that kind of whittles it down. It just kind of follow up. Same thing if there was a violation of people blocking the street. Let's say Bob's Burger is so great that, you know, the crowd overwhelmed the street. Let's say Bob's Burgers was so great that, you know, the crowd overwhelmed the street, and somebody complained that they couldn't get through. Again, we would know that's Bob's Burgers. That's what's popping in my head.
Can I slightly clarify? In the proposed ordinance under conditions of permit, item 12, in reference to Mr. Fagerly's comments of a whistleblower boosters event, it says, "Mobile food units cannot locate within 300 feet from the perimeter of any pre-approved festival, sporting event, or civic event unless a license is issued to be part of the festival or event." That would eliminate the competition on those events.
Okay, so this will come back to council meeting for the 17th, is the way it's drafted. The city attorney will take these items into consideration, bring that back. Anything else that the local staff to be aware of, that they take the city attorney? Okay, with that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is committee structure. Councilor Christensen, I'd ask this to be placed on the next agenda, that we had some time, and we had some time for the evening, so I know that you had some questions about this, and have some direction, so...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this up several times, and I just, you know, in business, we try something new, maybe only a month, six months, we'll say, "Is this working, is it not working, what can we do better, and what shouldn't we be doing?" And we don't, we haven't seemed to do that with this item. Committee structure as it is now is, to me, it isn't working, I think several of you would agree. We, we see much less of the public, with all the committees, the standing committees we used to have. Public Works, we'd always have the public in there, speaking, whatever issue came up, finance, the same thing, labor, all that stood alone. But community development, you know, we had people in there talking about parks, and whatever was going on in the city, and that doesn't happen anymore. You know, look at the public here tonight, we've got candidates that are running for office, Tribune, and that's it? And this is, Ruby, yeah, Ruby. They don't seem to be involved anymore, and I suspect this because we don't have a set committee meeting day. Well, I can't say that it's, it's a couple hours prior to each council meeting, but there's rarely an agenda of, you know, we got Public Works, what do you, what do you have to talk about tonight? Our finance committee is Audrey and the mayor and Mr. Opens. You know, I guess we're invited, if not much we want to, but if it was a standing committee, and you hadn't be there, you know, we'd be much better informed, so would the public. Another downfall of not having set committees is we have, I'm looking for leadership on the council. The council's supposed to lead the city, not the mayor, not the administrator, it's the city council. And the only chance in the past that the city council members had to lead was, they were chair of these committees. And we would see the department heads at least every other week, twice a month. Finance would sit down, Mr. Opens would come in there, and the chair, and then the three other committee members, council members would be there, and discuss whatever needs to be discussed, and then forward it on to the city council. I'm not a believer that we have to have the entire council there at every committee meeting, it just gets, it goes nowhere. The mayor, the mayor is doing a fine job of leading these, but it's, he's the leader. There's not a council member to this lead. I'm looking for some leadership. Many other cities, the, the mayor comes out of the city council, is a former council person. That doesn't happen at Hommerford, since Mr. Heike was mayor. And there's, there's no, how do I say it? No chance to show leadership. I know Audrey's, it's a campaign through by being the mayor from town, she's doing a good job, but there's no, the council isn't working, and the public isn't being informed like they used to be with our standing committee structure that we used to have, labor, public works, community development, and finance. I, I wish that the council members that haven't been under a committee structure would, would agree to maybe try it for six months or one year, because what we're doing isn't working, from what I see. And I heard from the general public also, "What's going on over First Street and Hommer Avenue?" "I don't know." "I see their tearing building down." We didn't discuss it in any committee meeting. Community development, we used to get Mr. Peterson's report twice a month, about what's happening, who's coming to town. "We got an exciting, something happening in industrial park, I'll let you know a little later about it," but the way we are today, it's just, this is the committee structure right here, and no, nobody from the public here, and we didn't have any Public Works, Finance, Community Development, or Labor. And Labor definitely needs to meet, not now, because we've got contracts in place for three years, but I'm sure that our HR person has had some issues maybe that we should be made aware of. That would happen in a closed labor meeting. But back to Finance, Finance is being run by Audrey, the mayor, and the administrator. We give a report every couple weeks, or once a month, but it's being run by them, and I don't see the council members engaged as we used to be. Now, the, the good thing about the structure we have today is, I, I see that we're spending less time on the meetings, but that isn't necessarily what's good for the public. And I, I say this many times, and it's, we're here, we're elected by the public, we're here to serve them. And I don't see us serving them very well in the past year and a half, I really don't. This is my opinion, and I'm expressing it. I, I don't know why we go back and try that committee structure, so we can show, have some council persons show leadership. I see us running backwards, our chart says it's strong council, weak mayor, and it's been just the opposite for a year and a half. It's evidence being led by the mayor, nothing against you, Mark, because you're a good mayor, but I just, can, can others express their feelings about this, and maybe go back to that committee structure? I'm getting dry talking about that. I know several others have, have the same concern, and I want us to serve the public, that's why we're here.
Councilor Christensen, I'd just like to, just to point out that in preparing the budget, it was the mayor, the finance liaison, the administrator, and the finance director. As far as the other items, I don't meet with Councilmember Nelson, the administrator, and the finance director on that, I don't know that I've ever been, well, maybe one time in the last year, been in your office, I think that's it, so, so just wanted to clarify that.
That's, that's fine, I mean, during the budget cycle, you can be with them.
And I do, I always have, I think the previous mayor did as well. Council, comments? You know, I mean, we talked about this a few months ago, and we kinda came up with this new, gonna have a lead for each of the positions, and so, yeah, so, I think it's good to have a conversation, I don't think there's anything wrong with a conversation. I think, maybe if people knew some of the other, you know, weak mayor, strong council cities, I think it'd probably establish it. You know, and so, you know, I encourage people to look back to and see what your box... Councilor Mrazus.
Okay. I would just like to talk to some of the points that Councilmember Christensen brought up. And again, when I think about what's, how we can best serve our constituents, and the people who put us here, it's being the most informed that we can be. And so, when you talk about looking for leadership, I guess I'm not understanding that, because we're all leading in the positions that we're, we are at, at the table. So how, you would be looking for leadership among one standing up more than another, that doesn't make sense to me. We're all equal at the table. As far as having relationships with department heads, if you're not on the certain committees with certain department heads, you're not getting, then the whole council isn't getting to have those relationships with those council members. Where when we get, all get the information at the same time, we all get to meet those department heads, and we all get to have that same information to be able to talk to our constituents that may have questions about things. Now, as far as what's going on in the community, I think the updates have been good. We've, we've gotten, every council meeting, every other council meeting, we have updates on what's going on. Yeah, there might be times we may not know that something's getting torn down, but I don't know that having a committee meeting would have made you apprised of that information anyway, or aware of it. With the committee structure, I think there are some committees that have more information and hold more power than other committees, and I think that, that puts some council members in a position of maybe having more control than other council members. And I just think we're all on the same playing field, when we all get the same information, and it hasn't been diluted or paraphrased, we get it firsthand, to be able to go back to our residents and constituents, to be able to tell them what information was dispersed, how it was said, and what's going on. I think this, this format that we've been using is working. I like, we have schedule of what's going to be discussed, and I think we get good updates on the finances. I will agree that labor was a little bit, or the wage negotiations this year, you know, given that we had, you know, HR change, we had a new city administrator, that we could have, a labor committee would have been useful in that, in that particular situation this year, but we got through it, and we worked through it as a council. I just, I don't know that the public is gonna get any more information by having committee meetings than what they get now, being able to see live the committee meetings before the council meetings. I think that's an improvement. I think we've improved on the, on the communication with the public, being able to see firsthand what's going on, rather than just having minutes read. So I, I, I like how things are going right now.
How would you compare it to the committee structure we have when you, every part you'll get that? You know, how, how can you say that it's better? I don't, I don't follow that, I guess. Say, labor. You know, we had a labor attorney for many, many, many years, and all of a sudden, somebody decided we're gonna switch. The council had no say, absolutely no say about that. And to me, that's major, because the one that we had, I would have opted to keep him here. Staff maybe didn't like him, because he was on the city side a lot, but I mean, why all of a sudden did that happen, without any input from the council? That's just one instance. But I, I do question how you can compare what we're doing today to what I did for 20 years with the structure, committee structure that we had. I know, my mind and mine said that worked better than what we're doing today, I don't have been able to compare the two. And if I'm the only one to speak, because it's fine, I can accept, continue what we're doing, it's, it's, I got seven meetings left, and a bunch of what I say now and have last year and a half is, can't punish yet, or so. But I think it's something that we need to talk about, and, you know, I'd be a little concerned about it. Forward some feelings about how they handle issues without the committee structure. I mean, we at least need the finance committee to, and that's our, that's our number one job, the first thing to the city owner. And we get fed the information, but we don't, you know, we don't get into specifics about it, and we just keep getting the information. I'm, whatever the council goes along with, it's fine for me, but I just see that it's not working.
Councilor Schwanous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a responsibility on council members' parts to read the updates that are sent to them, along with the interme, the weekly updates, the inter maintenance updates, the council packet. If you're not reading that information, I can understand why you don't know what's happening in the city. The comment that was made about wanting to provide an opportunity for leadership, the last time that we discussed this, it was asked that the mayor not be the one leading the discussion, and so, we selected individuals who would chair those committees within the work session. And I just wanna note, for the public's information, this is the second time meeting, work session in a row, and what it references is Labor Relations Committee, no report, Public Works Committee, no report, Finance Committee, no report, Community Development Committee, no report. It was left up to those council members who said that they would chair those particular areas, to take the initiative to put together that agenda for that portion of the meeting. And the mayor has called those individuals to be able to lead that part of the discussion, and sometimes it's done more effectively than others. So, to say that this is still the mayor's full meeting in this work session, I think is inappropriate, the attempt to make that change was made, but, and, and I don't mean to, I, I don't, I don't mean to belittle those who have stepped up to that position. If there is no report to be given, there is no report to be given, but let's not say that that responsibility wasn't handled, handed over to others, when in fact it was.
Councilor Nelson.
Thank you. A couple of comments, and I have a concern about the fact that we aren't getting reports, and that, and when we were working on the agenda for this meeting, I asked the administrator Collins why we weren't getting reports, and if we couldn't require some sort of report from Public Works, from Labor, from Community Development. When we set this up, I worked with Mr. Opens, and our assumption was, and it works good for Finance, that the report comes on the second half of the month. And so, that kind of rotating, and whether that fits or not, but I do think there are things that could be communicated. Is it, whose responsibility is it to communicate those things on the agenda? I get a call almost every two weeks to see if there's something that I want on the agenda, and I work with Steve and Mr. Opens to, to do that. We took the approach that we were trying to try to do some education pieces, we haven't been successful in that yet, because there have been too many things on the work session. But I do think there are things that should be communicated from the other departments, and I don't think it would be, if I understand correctly, the department directors have a meeting at least once a week. We get an email with what they talked about in that meeting, but the public doesn't get that information, and I do think that, that staff could be communicating that, and we could ask our city administrator to make sure that those things are communicated at our work sessions, or there is an opportunity to do something that's not allowed. I think this is a work in progress. We also talked about, the labor issues come up differently, and perhaps that needed to be a separate committee meeting, but that hasn't happened either. So, I don't know, there's a lot of things going on, so I don't think what we have is perfect, but I do... But I do think the no report, no report, no report, no report is frustrating also, both for the community, because there are things that are going to be shared internally. And I think that we could ask for those reports from that. So, I don't, more engagement, different kinds of structure, open to that. I think, maybe we look at it again, the beginning of the year. But I do think communication and communication with our community, I mean, our community's been asking for this to be live, or our city council meetings to be live. And I think staff do have lots of things going on, and that it would be appropriate to share some of those things on a regular basis and not just in an email.
Councilmember, if you're involved in this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what Councilman Christensen said, because we're old people and we were used to doing it that way. As for relationships, I don't know. For example, finance, we'd have 45 minutes to two hours every other Monday. We're lucky to see the finance director for 15 minutes at a work session. So, I don't know how you can build a relationship that way. As for Community Development, which I'm supposed to be head of, Bruce will call me and tell me if something important is beyond the work session or in the council packet. And I'm not going down to City Hall and micromanaging, saying, hey, we need to do this, we need to do that. I mean, that's what we pay them for. And I appreciate the emails we're getting from the administrator coming out in the last month. And we tried to go back to the old way and we would defeat it, so we're trying this hybrid, but I really don't think it's working either. And I'm in the minority.
Councilmember Nelson.
It was an experiment, and we went to this system and those that were here before, and then one of those that were here before granted only a year under the committee structure. It wasn't perfect. We talked about perhaps why that didn't work. There were attendance issues and things like this, but the system was not broke. And we chose to try something different. And it wasn't working well, so we tried a hybrid. And I will tell you, some of the comments that have been made around the table this evening about how the system works is quickly changing my mind that we probably need to return to a committee structure for labor and finance. Because I am the current, without a title, cheerleader for labor, if you will. And just so you understand, I meet frequently with the resource director Beckman, and we talk about the issues that are coming through labor. And we will continue to do that. I was in the offices today. And we have several plans that are sitting there that we're going to talk about, but they're not finished. I could give you a report every time about a bunch of unfinished things that we're looking at. That if you were part of a committee, you would know what we are doing. But since we do not have committees, I apparently know it until the whole committee needs to hear the whole thing at the same time. But if we would have done it in a committee structure, at least half of the council would know all of the things that we're working on and we're not finished with. For instance, crumpest timeskeeping system, looking forward to hearing about it next week. Organizational chart, recreation coordinator job, a couple of policy changes, there are things that are happening. When we say there's no report, it's because I would have nothing to bring to you that is complete. When they are complete, we bring them. That's how we're functioning. However, I will tell you, as the quote unquote cheerleader, apparently people like a committee structure. And so, I have been called the labor chair on many occasions, and I have been given issues that a labor chair would deal with to bring to a labor committee, which I refuse to do. I say, I am just the person who was assigned to me with the HR director to talk about these things. And then we bring them here. And that does slow down the process, but I understand this council wants to take, to have everybody here at the same, at the same time. But I'm telling you, I have been called many times to act as the chair of labor committee, which I will continue to refuse to do until we actually have a labor committee. And so, if you want to criticize the lack of communication coming out of it, we created that piece by putting the hybrid system in. We do have council members who will hear things that other council members will not hear, and I will hear them first. That's happened. Is that leadership? I, I am in no position to make any of those decisions, so it puts me in a very frustrating position. I have shared that frustration with several people. If you want this job, you can certainly have it. Trust me, it all, it comes with no pay, and no gratitude, and lots of, some complaints that come with that. And that's fine, I gladly give it away. But the fact is, this is a system we created, and I don't think it is working very effectively. To say that it is, perhaps we can shift, people can become these quote unquote cheerleaders and see how frustrating that system is. I would love to see finance and labor go to, back to a committee structure. Now, I understand it means more meetings for people, but those two committees need a committee structure. This is just not working effectively for those two areas, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the designated Public Works, Public Safety Chairman. And I get a call also Wednesday before the Monday council meetings. General Sean called and he says, what do you want on the agenda? I did go on meeting with Sean a couple of times a month back. And again, I'm receiving this information alone. There's no committee there, we aren't discussing any issues, like what's the cost of the concrete versus asphalt? Why are we tearing up 13th Street, not 15th? Those are issues that we would discuss in our committee meeting, and we would have the public there because they would say, we don't want 13 tore up. 15 doesn't work shape. And we would discuss, and, and when you sit down and discuss things, you remember and recall them much better than you do giving notes every week from our administrator or department head. You can read through them, and it's just, you weren't part of the discussion. You weren't part of it. You're just reading what's handed to you, and this is what, this is what the public works. I mean, Sean would ask me every Wednesday, what do you want on the agenda? I'd go, well, what's happening in Public Works? Well, I can update the streets, and I can update, you know, the equipment to buy, et cetera. I'm the only one hearing that. Nobody else is. We get in the consent agenda, you know, just purchasing it, why they're hearing it, all kinds of forms. I don't know if you, you see our council packets, man, there are hundreds of pages. You know, there are 20 pages, you sit down on a Sunday night or Saturday and try to filter through that and get what you can out of it. Once in a while, you'll see something that you didn't know was going on and you remember it. But if you're not there discussing it with, with the committee chair and three council members and the public, mostly, we would get more people at our committee meetings and they, they'd have concerns and we'd listen to them. Sure, they'd be in our minutes and we'd read them, you know, at the council meeting, and it takes time to do that to know something. That's the only time that it's, that it's announced publicly. Presently, Judy reads the consent agenda. Here's what was in it, da 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 da. But there's not one thing in there for the public to swallow, any specifics. There's nothing in there. We get the information, and it's on our computers, but there's nothing, the, the public doesn't know why we're tearing 13th instead of 15th. We don't discuss any issues of stormwater. You know, we used to discuss that, it came up almost every other Public Works, Public Safety. The numbers from our chiefs, chief of police, fire chief, you know, they would go through them at the committee and you could discuss, well, hey, how come there's more calls for assistance from such and such this last month? And they would explain it to us, and then we would explain it to the public through the minutes. Now, we just get them and read through them and, you know, nothing's discussed about them at all. And we used to, I used to encourage the chief at every Public Works, Public Safety meeting to, to, to give us, and the chief, fire chief, you know, what tip did you give the public this month? It might be winter time, and it would be, you know, make sure the fire hydrants are clear to snow, and it wouldn't be anything. They'll report that. The chief might say, the chief of police, that we're having problems with vandalism on electric boxes, people are spray painting with that. And then the public can be made aware of it and they can report it. All those little things, the public is interested in. I'm getting old and I, like Rick said, I mean, we, we lived through the committee structure. I know that it worked, and what we're doing now isn't working for the public. And I'm supposed to be here for the public. I, I need to be, go on and on about this, but I think it's very, very important. We've got to remember who we're serving, and I think they've forgotten a lot of times.
Who we know, I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor. Just a minute. You know, as we look down the table today, you look at all the council members, and they have these big, big things. And the meetings are, so obviously, staff knows that it's a weak near system. That's my attempt at humor.
Councilmember. Let's go, Brown.
What we're seeing going on tonight is an open forum, and this is what the public will see at everything, at every, at every meeting that we have. If we go into a, a committee structure, they're not broadcasted, they're recorded on a tape recorder digitally, you can go out and listen to them. But, did I ever do that? I'm just speaking for myself. No, I never did that. But I hear that people watch this. People see this interaction. The funniest comment I heard is, somebody said, yeah, this is our date night. They watched council meeting as a date night. So, they want, what we're doing tonight is, is a committee meeting in front of the public, as far as I can see. And we're not, we're not holding anything back. I, I, and then, and we're breaking it down for next month, we, on the 17th, we got the Wilmer Municipal Budget Presentation, we got the intro to the new firefighters. So, those are in the work session. Those are things that we're going to talk about. That, that is what the public's going to hear about. Do we get through them all? No. Do they get moved? I know that organizational chart thing was put off a couple of weeks and a couple of meetings, but it's coming back. I, I firmly believe that this is the way we should be doing it. Everybody's hearing, hearing the discussion tonight. I think we've talked about having a labor and finance committee, and I think we're all in agreement that that probably should occur. I'm not saying this shouldn't occur. And I think we've, we've talked about that numerous times, and, and I think as a, you know, what I'm understanding as a group, that we're, we're for that. I think it's important to be, to have those pieces in a committee format because I, I think that's, that's a good idea. But I believe that even in that structure, that information has to come out in this form. It has to come out to the public and hear us lead the discussion and, and talk about it. So, I, I'm not, I'm not for the committee structure. I remember being on the planning commission, and what we had there is, somebody would come in with a plan, an idea, we'd discuss, we'd vote on it. Very seldom was there anybody there to make public comment. There might be a counselor there, but very, very seldom did we have the room packed. The package, the packing came when it came in front of the council. It seemed like that's where you got your, if it was a, if there was an interest. So, that goes there. And off the subject, Councilmember Christensen, I appreciate your, your, your input. And I firmly believe that after your seventh meeting, I will miss hearing what you have to say. I believe there's some knowledge, experience and wisdom there. There's words that we can, can be learned from. So, you know, I think we'll, we'll miss your input. I don't necessarily have to agree with it all the time, but it's interesting to hear what you have to share. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you think you were Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we are. Yep. Moving.
Councilmember Nelson.
Hey, I think we can do better with what the process that we have isn't working. I think some weeks I feel differently than other weeks. But I do think that we could ask that we do get reports. The things that Councilmember Rossman reported about labor would probably be, would probably be good to know that things are being worked on, instead of getting them and they're done. It's a work in progress. So, I'd, I'd ask for staff to give us more reports. If there's additional things on finance, I know that will work, we'll work at that. But I do think there are things going on, and when you go to meetings and you hear, go to other meetings, you hear some of the things that are going on. At a housing meeting today, there are things, things that could be shared regarding community development, public works, all of them. I'd ask that we try to just be a little bit more responsible, all of us, with asking the questions. The statistics for the fire department and the police department are there, and if there's something, I think it puts our responsibility to make sure that we read those and ask the questions when we get the information. If we choose to stay with what we're doing, I think we can do better. And I think that would be a good thing. And if we, if the structure needs to change and we get that labor meeting once a quarter or whatever it is we're going to do, or finance once a quarter. But I do think there are things that could be shared more regularly from staff.
So, listening to the discussion tonight, I would like to direct the administrator to meet with the HR director and the finance director, to come back to the meeting on the 17th next week with a recommendation on what that committee structure would look like. And we will do that, and then we'll have that discussion again next week. Anything else to come from the meeting? Councilmember Rossman.
Well, if part of the issue is the public gleaning the information that we have and being able to share with the public, would we want to look at having the consent agenda, some of those minutes read then? Instead of just going through them like we do on the consent agenda? We throw that out there.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking the administrator to do is come to us with a recommendation. I think that would be part of his recommendation. It would be a nomination, that, Council.
Yes, that's how I would see it.
Councilmember Christensen.
I appreciate the fact that you're all equipped with my passion, whenever I can be involved in something, I can become passionate about it, and it's quite evident. I've got an issue here that needs to be brought to the council, should have gone to the Public Works Committee. I have a constituent that's had some damage done to his boat, Ike is fully aware of this. One of the public boat landings in footlick. And he claims it's because the Public Works wasn't maintaining it properly. It was quite a bit of damage to his boat. And Ike, I'd like you to explain it to the rest of us, and maybe we can talk to Public Works about it, or talk about it publicly, like it should have been in a Public Works meeting, and then brought to the council. But I told him I'd bring it up, and you would explain to the rest of us what his concerns are. Hello, I don't know. I don't know if we should do that, is why I'm smiling. I, I, I know your intentions are good, but I know Robert Scott's not here tonight, but what we're dealing here is with a liability issue that I'm working with him. And I know that I have to get back with him, but we've already had an insurance claim adjustment made, a decision made to him on that. I'm working with him, I'm trying to come to a resolution with that. But I do not feel that a legal issue like that should be described at this point in an open meeting. So, I regretfully decline if I could. That's fine with me, but I promised him I'd bring it up to the meeting. Understand. He's called a couple of people at Public Works and yourself, and he called me and talked. I've met with him. I've met with him, I've met with him with staff one-on-one just last week, or two weeks ago.
And he has nowhere else to go, but if we had a Public Works Committee meeting, he would have come to that, expressed his desire or his displeasure whatsoever. So, that's just one, one item where the public can come into a smaller setting and feel more comfortable. I didn't mean for you to get into a legal stuff, but I said I'm going to bring it up.
I understand.
He's probably watching, so.
He's a very nice man, very refreshing.
Thank you for your answer. Senator Porter.